If I may have your attention, we'd like to call the Danville City Commission Regular Meeting to order for today, September 11th, 2017. And we would like to start today's meeting off with a special tribute and prayer in honor of the life of our citizen, Mr. Stuart Powell. If you will bow with us. Our heavenly Father, we are thankful for our many blessings today. We remember with gratitude the life of Mr. Stuart Powell, who has inspired us with his life of service to our community, to our state, and to our nation.
We ask that his friends and family be comforted with the knowledge that although he has departed this life, he is with you in eternal life.
May we remember him with gratitude for his generosity of spirit and service to our local community, state, and nation.
As public servants, may his memory inspire us to do thy will and to make wise decisions for the benefit of all of the people of our community. We ask these things in thy name. Amen.
Amen. And we want to thank him for his many years of service to the Danville-Boyle County community, especially to our local airport. And as we reflect on the life and legacy of Mr. Stuart Powell tonight, I'd also ask the commission to reflect, and the community to reflect, on the life and legacy of Mr. Michael Smith, who also passed away recently after being a business owner, a funeral director, for over fifty years in Danville and Boyle County community. But also, Mr. Hunter reminded me of his work in Nicholasville, Jessamine County, Frankfurt and Franklin County, and Fayette County and Lexington. So, we've lost two giants in our community here recently, and we want to be sure not to let the memory of either one of these great men die. Okay, we would like to ask the audience to stand as the commission leads itself in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. For those who are visiting for the first time, I am not the mayor of the city of Danville, I'm the Mayor Protem. I'm Commissioner Atkins. Our honorable mayor, Mike Paris, is someplace in Florida in the storm. And that's the story I'm telling. Y'all help spread that, okay? The chair would like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. At this point in our agenda, we have an opportunity to hear the public. And at this point in our agenda, you're allowed to speak on agenda items only. And because there are a lot of strangers present this evening, I'd like to ask you to please identify yourself as you come forward to the mic. So is there anyone present who would like to speak on behalf of the public? Thank you for your attendance and presence tonight. So Commissioners, let's move forward to our planned agenda.
Could I interject one thing before we move on?
Yes, sir. I knew you was gonna do that to me.
I would like to draw attention to Commissioner Denise Cochran.
Could you please stand?
I wasn't gonna make you do that. We have a standing wager between Danville and Boyle County.
Oh.
The winner, whoever loses, has to wear the shirt of the winner, me being a Danville grad and Danville person. For the second year in a row, I've got to provide Denise with her wardrobe for tonight's meeting.
I just want to say, you're killing me rebels, you're killing me.
And he forgot to mention that she's a graduate of the other school. We won't call her that.
That's right. I wasn't sure she graduated, so I wasn't gonna go there.
Well, you know.
That's better than that fifty-five-dollar ham, though, right?
Well, that game, though, you know, you have to applaud, especially the kicker of that game. That game was the epitome of high school football.
I agree.
And you have to applaud any, anyone, especially a high school kid, who can kick a forty-five-yard field goal, so.
That's right.
We'll take that.
Very good. Thank you.
So you stood up and clapped and applauded his efforts that Thursday night like the rest of us did, right?
I did, yeah.
All right, good lady. All right.
I was on the fence, though. I was like, please don't hit that. Oh, wow, that would be really awesome if he did. Oh, please don't get that.
Okay, moving right along. Agenda item number one, approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Entertain a motion?
I move to approve the minutes of the previous meeting on eight twenty-eight seventeen.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections, additions, deletions? All those in favor say aye. Commissioner Rick, I looked right at you, Jack. Okay. Item number two, code enforcement report and update on 311 West Main Street by Mrs. Bridget Lester.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. I'm gonna start with 311 West Main Street update. The property owner continues to rehab the building. The roof is being replaced, and there's no roof leakage into the building now, which is great. The first floor at the back entrance has been removed and being replaced in the inside. So, the building inspector and codes enforcement officer continue to work on that, so we are very pleased with the progress thus far.
And you will remove that off of our agenda once it gets a certificate of occupancy?
Whenever you are ready for me to take it off there. But yes.
That'll be an appropriate time, but we appreciate the updates.
Yes. Our August codes enforcement report, we had twenty-three grass and weeds. We're slowly getting to the end of that season, hopefully here before long. We issued twenty-five business licenses. We placed thirteen liens for a total of $2,560. We recovered four for $975.13. We issued one hundred and forty-eight parking citations for a total of $3,655. And we've had several inspections going on, and we're in the process of working on quotes, bids, slash bids for the Sutton Steakhouse and several other items there. And I'll entertain any questions you might have or comments.
I talked to a neighbor of the Main Street property today, and they were really pleased at the work that was going on next door, so.
Good.
That's good news.
Yes, got some good things going.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'll comment that I think the work that's being done here and these reports have been very effective. I think that we're moving along really good. And I want to kind of make a note here, too, that, you know, we end up spending money on things like cost of mowing, but I'm looking at the lien amount recovered. It covered the cost of mowing, so as we try to keep our city clean, at least we're not going broke doing it. I hope not.
We're trying not to.
Other comments, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Item three is the recommendation for approval of text amendment to our zoning ordinance. Mr. Steve Hunter, thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys. I guess tonight, just more information to give you a little update on the recommendation of the architectural design guidelines. As you know, the planning commission's role is fairly limited. The Architectural Heritage Board did a lot of work on those design guidelines over the few years, and you guys even had a work session on those. Lot of public debate and discussion, and the planning commission's role is to do a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, although actually the document doesn't really get added to the zoning ordinance. It's referenced in the zoning ordinance that the planning commission created the overlay, or the zoning ordinance did, and created the board, and the board has the ability to create documents and design guidelines, which they did. Then we have the official public hearing after a lot of debate and discussion, which did happen. There was no discussion at the planning commission, though. The board members showed up, did a great presentation, walked the planning commission through the design guidelines. The staff looked at them. We had no concerns. There's some housekeeping things that need to happen to the zoning ordinance down the road, but the planning commission had seven members present and voted unanimously to approve the, or send a recommendation to the city commission for approval. And again, no citizens spoke for or against at the meeting. I think there had been a lot of discussion before then, and so we did our part on that. Now, it's here at the city commission for your consideration to formally adopt those design guidelines, again, as an addendum to the zoning ordinance and as a working document for the Architectural Heritage Board. I'd be glad to answer any questions about our process, or if you guys have any other concerns about the planning commission or what we're doing. I'd be glad to fill you in on anything you might want to know.
Any questions, comments?
Looks like action needed. I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation of the text amendments to the zoning ordinance.
I'll second for discussion if there is discussion.
Okay, probably move to second. Any discussion?
I'll just note for the commission, just as we do with zoning amendments or other text amendments, after we receive your positive feedback, I will proceed to draft the appropriate document for your official vote at the next meeting. So your motion is well taken, and it's fine, but we'll take that as direction to draft the necessary document to approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Dexter.
I might ask, yeah, Commissioner Terry and Cottrell. I remember at the session, there was a few residents that had some hangups with a certain word, and I can't remember what it was. Do you think we've cleared that hurdle okay?
The word was, is discouraged, is that what it was?
Appropriate. Unappropriate, and the board, the board addressed that a little bit to the planning commission. Again, these are design guidelines, and they issue certificates of appropriateness, or COAs as we know them. So that word is not uncommon in design guidelines around the state. You're either gonna say not permitted, not allowed, or not appropriate. I think the difference was probably not the appropriate, but the shalls, and it being a little looser language with, you know, not appropriate, where we've seen not allowed in the past, or not permitted, or shall be required. So no citizens spoke, again, up or down at our place on that, and it felt right in the document as I read it. And again, it was well-written as a modern set of design guidelines, in my opinion, and I didn't think the words jumped out at me, but I understand where the confusion would be. But the board, I think, clearly stated why it was important they kind of use that terminology. It was more about less shalls and more kind of may's and should-be's. I think that's what they were trying to convey, that that's really where they're trying to go, is a little bit of flexibility for the board to make their decisions.
And I think that was a major issue that was brought to us, is that the public would be more aware of the fact that there is flexibility, and we use the term wiggle room in making decisions, and I think you all stated about the fact that each one is an individual action, an individual plan, and that gives you some room for flexibility.
My question, is that in the text, though, that there is wiggle room?
No.
Well, see, that's my, that was my question, is if I was reading this from somewhere else, and this is all I knew about it is what I read, I would read not appropriate as no. It's like when you're a kid and your mom says maybe, maybe generally means no. I wondered if we could add a sentence, not appropriate, but could be considered, or something, just to underscore the fact that we can't consider it. But maybe that's too loose, I don't know.
Well, give you an example. Not appropriate, again, it sounds like a no, but I could see an example where it's kind of like a maybe yes. If you're replacing, for example, some historic windows, and, and again, the design guidelines now allow not an exact, you know, you could probably get a contractor that's gonna build them to look the same, but maybe use a material that's not hundred-year-old wood or whatever. So I think the way they see it is the word not appropriate means there's gonna be situations where a certain kind of window replacement will not be appropriate, but in the right setting, each site being looked at independently, it may be that they're appropriate because this contractor is putting forward a better quality material than maybe someone buying some replacement windows that would not be appropriate, just simply because of the texture or style, or it's very easy to see that they're not a representation. So I think the board sees it as an opportunity to have some wiggle room. It's not appropriate, but there's an opportunity where it may be appropriate. I think that's how they're looking at it. I'm not sure what other substitute words they could use.
Well, that's, that's the thing, and I understand the intent and the spirit of it, and I applaud that. I was just trying to, like I say, if somebody was just reading that, and that's all they knew about it, would they be discouraged in investing or redevelopment or?
Well, I think it's, I think there is some wording in here, I can't, can't find it at the moment, that says it's a case-by-case basis.
I tried to find that, too, 'cause I thought the same thing, but I could not.
I don't have my original copy.
I can't quote those either, but that's, in essence, what happens with each situation, is you present your application, your certificate of appropriateness, and that's reviewed on an individual basis, because it's by project. So that's what makes it so challenging to write these guidelines that's gonna address every situation. It's specific to the situation, and you look at that in comparison to the whole historic district, so.
Oh, I'd say, I do understand, and I.
But saying case-by-case basis, and then is or is not appropriate, is different than just having a blanket, not permitted.
Oh, I agree.
Or not, yeah. So I think.
A much better word than.
In comparison, there is a lot more wiggle room here.
Yeah.
But maybe if you have, if you're not comparing, I can see what you're saying, too, but I think that as long as the case, that case-by-case quote is in here, and I think it is, I have it marked on my original copy that I'll have with me, of course. I think as long as we.
Well, and I think the essence of reading this document, for me, the question was, is does this make it more user-friendly or not? And I think it definitely makes it more user-friendly for anyone and everyone who desires to think about a change, so.
And if you look at how many of these we look at in a year's time, we very rarely deny anyone. I mean, we may have to work around this, or tweak it, or something like that, but the number of ones we actually say no, absolutely cannot do that, is very minimal compared to the ones we do approve.
So what, so what we're really looking at is it may, it's case-by-case, and it may say not appropriate, and you, and so therefore, the board can say, well, that is not appropriate, but here's what is, instead of just a hard no.
Yeah, 'cause they really, the board really wants to try to approve the good ideas that people have, but sometimes it really just isn't appropriate for our historic district. It may work great somewhere else, it's just not appropriate for Danville and what we have set out for our guidelines. But these are a working document, you know, they're like any legislative document you have. You can change them. If we start really getting concerns again that this is not working, we can come back and review them again in the future.
And it's guidelines.
It's guidelines.
That's right. That's right.
Yes.
So with that said.
So do we really need to vote, make that motion and vote, Mr. Dexter?
I think our vote will say to staff to.
I have one more thing to say.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
My other concern was about the murals. Did anybody else have an issue with not allowing murals on the side of, actual side of buildings?
Are you talking about, like, on the, on buildings that are not painted? That's, that's a restriction outside of the Department of Interior. So, they, we can put them, they can put them on buildings that have been painted, masonry that has been painted, but.
They can't put murals on basements that has been painted?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's not the way. Okay, good, that's, I understand about the guidelines.
But we still need, we do still need additional work on that subject outside of these guidelines.
That's a public art.
Yeah, that, that's a more discussion topic, but as far as just, the board is concerned with the facade of the building and protecting that, and there's certain things that the Department, the Secretary of Interior standards say we can and we can't do, and we have to follow those, and we can't change those.
Okay. Very good. That's mine.
Any other comments or questions, concerns?
Commissioner, can you point me to the section where the language is that you're concerned about, about appropriateness? Are you talking about it just throughout the document?
Pretty much throughout the document, but.
When we prepare the text amendment for your consideration at the next meeting, I will review the ordinance with your concern in mind, or the design guidelines, to perhaps offer some feedback.
Just to follow up, Mr. Dexter, just so you know, those have been reviewed by the Heritage Council, so any changes we make will have to run back by them again, because we got a grant to.
I understand that, but they, we got a grant for it, but they're our guidelines.
Right.
So they're drafted with this city in mind, and this commission will have the final say on what's appropriate, not to use that word.
Right, but.
But I mean, we can, you can send that back to the Heritage Council, but with all due respect, it'll be with this body votes on.
And our approval of the, for tonight, is to say to staff to prepare the official documents for formal approval.
That's correct.
And again, I appreciate all they did, and, you know, it's hard to come up with guidelines that promote redevelopment and maintain the character and the charm of the city. That's, that's a tough, tough deal, and I think they've done a great job, so anything I bring up is just, you know, minor, minor stuff, I think.
And I would like to.
And like you say, it's a, it's a organic document, it can, can change over time.
And I would like to thank everyone who participated in the process and gave feedback. This, this has generated a lot of feedback, and a lot of people had reviewed them numerous times, as well as our consultant and our board members, and a lot of the community have looked at them, even if they didn't formally come forward and speak at them. But our group on Facebook got tremendous amount of conversation going back and forth on there, so it's been a good process to go through for everyone involved. So I would like to thank everyone who has taken the time and effort to put that forward, as well as yourselves, along with staff, and so it's been a very educational process for all of us.
I'll give you an example, I was sitting there, just thought, the board mentioned what we call hardy board, or, you know, cement paneling. They're gonna allow some flexibility for some replacement materials on historic buildings in those areas like hardy board. It's a perfect example of that not appropriate term. There's gonna be times when you look at a specific building, and it may not be appropriate for hardy board to be used, or EFS, for example, because of the integrity of the building or the structure, but then there's other times where it's gonna be in the historic district, it's fairly big, and the properties aren't, it's not that they're non-contributing, but they're older properties that maybe have been changed over time before the district was created, it just sets a different character maybe on that block than two blocks over. So the board sees the ability to do some things in those situations where it's not appropriate, maybe nine out of ten times, but this one time, because we're on this block, and this is replacement siding, we're gonna use hardy board, which isn't an original material, as a substitute material, because it, it does fit the character, and it will be appropriate on, on that one application. So I read the document like that, that's gonna give them some more flexibility, but there's gonna be times a certain material's not gonna work, and they're gonna use that provision exactly as it's worded then. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Will carry the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, reading, first reading of ordinance nineteen oh two, incentive for, is that ADKev?
ADKev.
ADKev.
ADKev, K-E-V, okay.
Nineteen oh two.
It's nineteen oh two.
Nineteen oh two or three?
Shall we have the city clerk read the first word?
Yes, sir.
This is the first reading of ordinance nineteen oh two, an ordinance pursuant to the Kentucky Business Investment Act, granting ADKev Incorporated a wage assessment, granting certain employees of company a partial credit against city of Danville occupational license tax, and providing provisions for recapture of these benefits by, in certain events.
Okay, chair would like to entertain a motion?
I move for approval of the first reading of ordinance nineteen oh two.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Commissioners, if I may, I'd like to offer an oral amendment due to a misreading of the chart that's attached as Exhibit A to the proposed ordinance. Section one refers to the creation and continual maintenance of at least twenty-five jobs. That is a mistake on my part. That should be ten jobs, which is the state activation date, which has been clarified by Jody Laster with me, and so I just would like to revise the ordinance to, every time there's a reference to twenty-five jobs, that it be revised downward to ten.
Go ahead.
And that's the standard that we've had for all of these wage assessments in the past. It was just a simple misreading of the, of the chart on the back by my part.
Is there anything Mr. Laster wants to tell us about ADKev, or can tell us about ADKev?
Yes, sir, thank you. Appreciate the city attorney's assistance, the city manager's assistance in bringing this forward, as well as the next proposal for Wilderness Trace Distillery, doing business as Wilderness Trail Distillery. But ADKev is an Indiana firm that will be locating in the Caterpillar facility. They will take ownership in December. They will begin their interior renovations of the Caterpillar facility during the course of 2018, with plans to be operational in January 2019. It's a plastic injection molding operation, planning to initially create seventy jobs in this specific project, growing to a hundred and fifty in future phase, and that will, they will be supplying the automotive industry and why they wanted to be located in Danville. They have two facilities in Indiana, Monticello and Goodland, Indiana, but they want to be here to serve the automotive manufacturers south of here, primarily Tennessee, one customer, but other options to serve the southeast, which we're kind of the perfect linchpin to that, particularly with a northern Indiana facility.
Great.
Other comments or questions? Roll call vote?
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Saries?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item four A, addition, first reading of ordinance nineteen oh four, incentives for Wilderness Trace?
This is the first reading of ordinance nineteen oh four, an ordinance pursuant to the Kentucky Business Investment Act, granting Wilderness Trace Distillery LLC a wage assessment, granting certain employees of company a partial credit against city of Danville occupational tax, license tax, and providing provision for recapture of these benefits in certain events.
Chair would entertain a motion?
I move to approve first reading of ordinance nineteen oh four.
Second.
Okay. Questions, comments?
I neglected to mention on the first ordinance, it applies to the second ordinance equally, that you can see the city share is point seven-two percent, which is actually a downward percentage of what has been previously provided. And Jody, you might want to explain the reason more artfully than I can, although that the combined city and county will add up to one percent now, where we used to add up to, I think, a percent and a half.
Yes, whatever half of the total combined was. What we're attempting to do, and I have described to you previously, that we wanted to work ourselves out of the enhanced state incentive status, which will essentially creates the opportunity for us to extend incentives for a period of fifteen years. Now, why is Wilderness Trail Distillery not pursuing fifteen years? Well, the incentive at the state level is structured for ten. They are always encouraged to try to recover their incentives as early as possible. It could be structured for five. So in this case, we're just utilizing what the state approved for recovery of ten years. But what we're attempting to do is prepare, because as of July one, twenty seventeen, the state announced that we will no longer be an enhanced incentive county by virtue of the drastic drop in our unemployment rate and other factors, which we've always been a leader on, post-secondary education attainment status, road and secondary system status. So what has always been holding us in the enhanced status of being able to recover incentives for up to fifteen years versus ten in non-enhanced counties, was that factor, and over a period of time, each year, the Cabinet for Economic Development monitors every county's eligibility for that enhanced status. So we're working ourselves out of a lesser status, if you will, and most of the counties around us have been unenhanced, and they felt that that was an unfair advantage on our part. How could Danville and Boyle County be an enhanced county? But nevertheless, the, the facts are that we will be working ourselves out of that as of July one, twenty twenty? ourselves out of that as of July 1, 2020. And we will be required, and I had mentioned this to this body before, we'll be required to produce, rather than in a voluntary status at this point, which puts kind of icing on the cake for our community, what I've been trying to position ourselves is to prepare for the day when we will be required to put up 1% anyway. The state will only put up at that point 4% of the total incentive and we'll put up 1% for the total five that the state is doing today. So that's basically where we're going and preparing for this. It's a much simpler dynamic to have .72% from the city proportional to your payroll tax percentage of the total and .28% for the county for a total of 1%, very clean, because they're looking at just one payment of the bill anyway at our local collection, joint collection office. So we're, we're preparing for that point now, and I think that it gives us a path to, to do so. And at the same time, you're actually seeing a reduction of the amount of incentive that you're having to put up.
And Jody, just for clarification too, when, it's one of the situations when you're in the enhanced program, it sounds like it's a good thing, but by losing that distinction, it's actually a positive.
Yes, it's, it's, it's almost the reverse, right?
So it's like a used car, calling it previously owned or previously occupied or something like that?
Well, it's almost this.
It's just a spin on a lesser status.
We were at a disadvantaged status. That's how you receive it. You're disadvantaged by vers, by virtue of your higher unemployment rate that we had in the period of 2010, 11, 12, and that put us into the enhanced status. And so we were disadvantaged. So that's how we got the enhanced incentive for it to be more attractive for a company to locate here. And now we're working ourselves into, to a point that with an unemployment rate that's hovering between 4.5% to 5% over a period of three to four years, we're moving back into the unenhanced or the not disadvantaged state.
So, so the point I was trying to emphasize to the commission is that by losing the enhanced status is actually a positive...
That's correct.
Sign of growth for the community.
The language is a bit contrary to that, it appears, but nevertheless, it's a good thing.
That a state term, probably.
Yes, I, I think I shared this via email with both the fiscal court and the commission some time ago, after we received notice that it was going to be withdrawn. And you have, you have a period to, to transition, three years. That's a long period of time, but it's government. And so we will transition out of this. And if you don't finalize before that time, that's another reason why we want to prepare for this. If, for example, ADKIV were not to finalize before July 1, 2020, which won't be the case, they would only be able to recover 10 years. But they're grandfathered in. So that's the difference that we'll be dealing with going forward.
Well, it looks to me, my quick math tells me that we're going to add some jobs, which is an excellent thing.
Well, yes, sir. And I'll be coming back for a third. We weren't able to do it in time for this, but coming back with the Dino incentive proposal. So among Wilderness Trail Distillery, ADKIV, and the Dino incentive, which was for locally, locally, we'll be talking about 90 jobs, if I recall correctly. We've more than made up for the losses at Panasonic and Caterpillar.
That is good news. Good work.
Yeah, so job well done.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good to have some good news. Yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, if I may, Mayor Pro Tim, this would be a good opportunity to introduce the new member to the EDP and...
Yes, I was hoping not to impose, but want to introduce my new colleague, Hal Good, who is the new Vice President, Chief Operating Officer of the partnership. And so I know that all of you have met with or talked to or know much about Hal.
We did present him time together.
And so we're thrilled for him to be on board. Yes, I know your paths crossed in the past. So Hal comes to us as our former state executive from the Kentucky Association for Economic Development. That's not the cabinet. That's our Economic Development Professional Association. So he was working with the Jodis across the state of Kentucky. And so having the opportunity to be closer to home as my former colleague in Springfield, Washington County, and very active in the regional efforts that we undertook together in creating what was Bluegrass South, but is now Kentucky Crossroads today in 2009, I think it's a perfect pairing of the work that we want to do as we continue to build our economic development program now on the, the foot of, or the heels of the strategic plan, which rarely do you have the opportunity for an economic development executive to push the reset button. I'm enthusiastic because of the changes that are underway. I don't feel as a mile wide and an inch deep as I have been for the last almost 10 years. And so critical things are happening within not only our board governance, but our staffing and the way we interact with our partners, such that I'm more enthusiastic than I've been probably for the last five years.
That's good.
Keep it coming.
Thank you.
Do you want to say something, Hal? Oh, I thought, I thought he was... I don't, I don't mean to take this away from Commissioner Atkins.
I will keep it short because I know this meeting's going really well. I'm, I'm glad to be here. It's just, it's just real awesome to be, you know, involved in economic development for 28 years and kind of be looking over the fence, if you will, living on the Boyle, Washington County line to see what's going on. Because I said I started working here in my career in college, after I graduated from college at Danville Office Supply, and working with Kevin and, and Donna. And of course, Kevin and I graduated from college. I don't know how Ted Baker hired a sixth grader at that time, but he did have Donna working there with us. And I think she came here to the city, but drew some real great friendships here in Danville. And it's been amazing to be able to get back with some of those. And, you know, I know, I know Chief Gray very well. He had married my cousin. We've been longtime friends. And I really appreciate the fact that I've been accepted so well coming in here. But please, don't hesitate to call on me when you start talking about Kentucky business incentives and anything like that. I've worked with those in the past and, and worked not only with individuals and economic developers around the state of Kentucky, but internationally as well. So it's been really good in economic development. Thank you for having me here.
Before you leave?
Yes.
You want to call out one more name? You called out Cottle and you called out Gray. You may as well go ahead and strike out while you're up there, right? Those are not, those are not good references for you.
Yeah. And, you know, Mayor Pro Tim, I did not use them as references when I applied for this job. So just want to show you that, that I did use a little common sense in the approach as well. So when you're in economic development 28 years, you do understand that, that part of it, you know, of what we actually do. So I appreciate that you were able to notice that. So you'll be a good consultant someday. So thanks again for having me.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Hal.
I couldn't pass that up, Commissioner Cottle. Next on the agenda is, oh, roll call vote on ordinance 1904.
Mayor Pro Tim Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Saries?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry? Yes.
Then we'll move to the city manager's report. Item number five.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor Pro Tim and members of the Board of Commissioners. Staff are busy on a number of work issues, but really two items I want to bring to your attention tonight, and only two. One is that at our last meeting, I believe, we had members of the public or a member of the public requesting information on the status of our wayfinding project and opportunities for citizens to become involved in making suggestions or hearing of any preliminary or other considerations that may have been adopted by our consultant. We will have our second public meeting on the wayfinding study to be held here in this facility, City Hall, on Tuesday, September the 19th at 6:30 PM. And we will be advertising that and I want to make you aware of that so that you'll be able to hopefully attend and participate in that second meeting as well. Also want to make you aware of the fact that the mayor has requested that we hold a special called City Commission meeting on September the 20th, which is a Wednesday of the following week, from 10 until 12 noon here at City Hall. Details of the agenda will be forthcoming, but I wanted to just inquire as to your availability to meet at that time tonight. And if you are available, or a majority of you are available, we'll plan to proceed with that meeting.
Did you say the 20th?
The 20th.
26.
Wednesday, September the...
26.
Is it 26?
No, you said 20, 26 is the other.
The 20th.
20th. 26 is the...
Next Wednesday, next 20th.
So we have one the 19th and the 20th?
No, the first one I mentioned, maybe I had the wrong date on the first one, which is quite possible. Because it's, it's the following.
26.
The 26. I'm sorry, it's a typo. It was 26, Tuesday, the 26.
So 19 and 26, okay.
And Wednesday, September 20th.
The 20th and the 26th.
From 10 until noon.
So the first one is the 20th, okay.
Correct.
All right.
Apologize for that.
That's all right. We just...
Way, wayfinding is the 26.
26.
6:30 in the evening.
So this, this commissioner will not be here for the special call meeting.
Okay.
Already planned out of town.
What is the topic? Do we know?
Well, it will be a discussion of property acquisition.
And that's the 20th?
That is the 20th, yes. It is, it has been difficult to find a day and a time that the commission can meet.
That's why, that's why the EDP meeting is on Tuesday, yeah.
But...
Well, I'm not participating in that day.
But irrespective of that community event, and in spite of the other meeting scheduled, this will be an executive session discussion exclusively on that Wednesday. So I think we could proceed with that meeting.
Okay.
The 20th is at 10 AM.
10 AM.
And the 26th is at 6:30?
6:30.
Yeah, okay.
Well, that's assuming that the majority of you are in agreement with that.
Yes, I am.
I can do that.
Yes.
So the wayfinding is the 19th?
All right. I stand corrected.
It's usually the 26th. I think it got changed last I heard.
You think it is the 26th?
It's the last one I heard, last data heard.
The 19th.
19th?
6:30 for wayfinding.
Wayfinding is the 19th at 6:30.
And I'm not available at that date.
So the 19th and the 26th?
You can just sleep here.
19th and the 20th.
19th and the 20th.
19th and the 20th.
19th and the 20th. So nothing on 26.
Good, it's good by me, I think.
So wayfinding is the 19th at 6:30, right?
Yes, 19th and 20th.
The 19th is wayfinding. It is the...
It's also the EDP meeting that Tuesday, the 19th also, in the morning.
In the morning, right. Things are busy here in Danville.
Yeah, and the, the 19th is a public, is the follow-up public presentation. It's not a published commission meeting.
Right.
It is a consultant...
It's an opportunity for...
Correct.
Right.
So it's not...
Presenting some preliminary information and hearing from the public.
Backpack meeting, essentially.
The one's at 10 o'clock in the morning, right? Okay.
And it's not anticipated on our 20th meeting at 10 o'clock that we will be taking any action. It's really just a discussion.
Yeah.
Meeting.
Okay. You want to continue?
No, I think I should stop.
Hey, we got it cleared up. It's the 19th and the 20th, right? Commissioner, Commissioner Terry and I put them down wrong, Ron. We, we'll clarify. We'll clear it up for you. Is that all your reports?
That's it, yes.
Thank you, sir.
That was the shortest, most confusing report you've ever done.
Well, I have been on vacation for a week, so...
Oh, you're good sailing, right?
He's still out on the water.
Okay, let's move along then. Next on our agenda is the second opportunity to hear from the public tonight. And at this time, citizens may come forward, identify yourself, please, and take us a little bit of time and talk about anything that's on the agenda or not on the agenda.
That's okay. I'm Ernie Moore, and you may find this to be a rather stupid comment and observation, but it wouldn't be the first one I ever made. During the design and so forth of Wisinger Park, there was a lot of discussion and about building the water curtain. And it was late and putting it up and so forth. And it was finally installed, I guess, I don't know when. And rather recently, I observed, we do have water coming down there. You can't see it. If you're on Main Street, you don't have a clue. The first time I observed that there was water coming down there was when I stopped to go into Subway to get a sandwich. And I don't know what we accomplished other than spending a lot of money to get that. And I don't know if there is any way that that can be enhanced so somebody can see it. But right now, it's worthless, in my view. Is there some way that colored water or something can be done? Lights, something to show it?
We talked about lights.
There, there are lights there.
Earls and...
I think they're being tweaked. Are they?
Yeah, we, it took a while to get those in. That's a sample set from a vendor. And we, we've been trying different colors and different things of them. You may, some, some folks actually have noticed and commented on. But we will put up that light bar. That, that may or may not address what you're talking about. I, my instinct is during the day it won't necessarily, but definitely it will add a, add a significant feature to it at night.
But it won't, it still will not be visible in daytime. There's not enough water falls down through there, big enough drops or whatever to see it.
Well, if, if the water's coming down clear, it's going to be difficult to see it.
Yeah.
Whether it's, it's a continuous sheet or in the way that it is, water's clear. And so unless you add turbidity to it, which that's really not, not the purpose of it, to be a turbid fall, it's meant to be a, a, more of a subtle, subtle drop. And so as that happens, it's, it's not necessarily, you know, going to be an elaborate visual, something you can see from far, far away, right? Because it's, water's clear, obviously.
It looks pretty in pictures. It looks like sparkles.
Yeah, but people coming in town and driving down Main Street, day, it doesn't mean a thing. You can't see it. And I thought it was supposed to be something that would add to the overall vision of the park and so. Whatever can be do, done to improve that would be nice.
And I think a big, a big piece of the, the enjoyment of it, it's not the quiet enjoyment of it. It's necessarily the sound created by the fall also. So it's really meant to be enjoyed when you're there in the park, right? It's not necessarily meant to be driving visible from 4th Street. Ideally, from 4th Street, you would see the, the things that are street-side, particularly the ornamental component to the plantings and the pergola design and whatnot. So it's really, I think, you know, I'm interpreting what the, what the landscape architect and the architect has said. So they're, you know, it's not really designed to be a waterfall that you're seeing from 4th Street or, or Main Street. It's designed to be an element when you're in the park.
Did I hear that some of the folks that, that work in the courthouse have complained about the noise? Is that, have you heard anything about that?
Yeah, I mean, the, I have heard that. I, I don't necessarily know that it, I heard it firsthand, that it's been reported to me. I've heard it secondhand from, from a couple of folks from the county. But I don't necessarily know, I've not heard it firsthand.
I haven't either, I guess.
But it, it, it can be loud if you, if you, you know, increase the volume much more. It's, the, the noise will increase dramatically, so.
I agree with Mr. Moore. If we could see it a little better, it'd be nice. It'd be interesting to see what the lights.
Well, it's more of a sound, I'm sorry, Rick. It's, it's, you know, it sounds nice when you're in the park. And I think that's mostly the purpose of it.
It's not why I voted for it, though. I voted for it because I wanted to see it as well as hear it. And I'm still waiting for that to happen, and I don't know if it's ever going to happen, but I think it's important to be able to see it. And as we travel the backroads of Kentucky, there are some examples out there of the exact same thing that, you know, you can see from the road and you can hear from the road as well. But it's a major improvement, don't misunderstand, but I would still love to see it, though, as I walk down the street.
Well, I think Earl's working on it. You know, we were disappointed with the boil up front, too, and I think we finally got that together.
That was good.
That's right.
We'll keep working at it. I don't think anybody's in disagreement with your comments. It's not what we saw in the picture, so I hope to get there. And, you know, you've been thinking about lights, so I kind of wonder about a different backdrop might present better.
And guys, let me get us back on track. I just violated our own policy. We responded to someone who spoke to us doing here, the public, and we're not supposed to do that, and I'm just as guilty as everybody else sitting here. So getting back on track, is there anyone else present who'd like to speak to the commission this evening? What's up?
Said Gordy Howell haunt us.
Oh, my buddy, okay. Seeing that there's no one, let's move on then. Commissioner's comments? Mr. Searies, you want to start us off?
Well, I can probably do that, sure. Of course, we just went through one of the big events of the area, the barbecue festival in our new location. And from all indications, we do have Jennifer Kirchner here with us from the CBB. It looked like it was equally successful in its new location. So citywide, of course, we had Commissioner Terry running in the Run for the Arts, in which drew a crowd of somewhere around 175, 180 runners, which was very successful.
The race drew the crowd. I did not, just to clarify that.
Are you sure?
And the smoking butt bike ride made its round, so... Things are active in Boyle County as per usual.
Want to say a little something, if you don't mind? I would like to show off my T-shirt, peace, love, and harmony, that are the young man, Bruce Cottle, that was here the other day promoting these, and the first batch has come in. But you can still get one if you go to their Facebook page. You can order one, they're going to do another order. They're going to do as many orders as they need to, so I would encourage folks to support the cause and get you a purple shirt.
And shirts are...
Pardon?
How much?
They are $10, which is a good deal.
Yes.
For any T-shirt, so...
Yes. And it's not black and gold, right? Damn God, I'm disappointed.
Well, have I talked about the fact that she has on a Danville? Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, you have two T-shirts up here. Thank you, everyone noticed.
Any other, Commissioner comments?
I can make one more. I think that, you know, in pride in our community, we were kind of hoping, I don't know what happened to it, that little Mr. and Miss Kentucky would have showed up to help us with the pledge of allegiance, because they're both Danville residents, so that's pride for our community and maybe, maybe we can pull it off next time, huh?
They're coming next time.
Here we go.
Well, the two items I'd like to call to the community's attention, the first one takes place the September 18th through the 22nd. It's called the Frank X Walker Literary Festival Number Four. It's citizens' concern for human relations efforts to bring diversity into our schools. So all of the Bull County and Danville 5th grade, 8th grade, and 11th grade students will be spending time with guest readers who are going into the schools and are reading materials about famous African-Americans or things written by famous African-Americans. And so if there are other guest readers out there who desire to go into our schools and to read, contact me at home or contact me on my email, and we'll get you signed up. But it's the 18th through the 22nd, from 8:30 to 3:30, and anyone desiring to go into our schools, you don't have to be an African-American to read. Just have to read something about an African-American or something written by an African-American, and then explain to our kids why you selected that piece to read. Then the second event is September 29th. It's a Friday, the last Friday in the month. It's Danville High School's homecoming weekend, but the most important event is the Robert P. Trumbo College and Career Fair. We are recognizing Robert Price Trumbo, an African-American male who graduated from Danville High School, be careful, back in the early 1960s, went to EKU, got his teaching credentials, did his student teaching at Bates Middle School in 7th and 8th grade, got a job at Danville High School teaching social studies at his alma mater, was one of the first, went up, was the first African-American to graduate from Danville High School, to come back to work at Danville High School. And Mr. Trumbo spent his entire 33 years working at Danville High School, educating all the kids in this community. So this college and career fair on the 29th is in honor of Mr. Trumbo. And behind the tables at this college and career fair will be Danville High School graduates of color, all kinds of colors. So I invite you, if you are available on the 29th of September, to again contact me, because we are still seeking out successful Danville High School graduates to participate in this college and career fair. And I need to define success, because that does not mean you have to be a college graduate to be successful. You have to be a living, working, valuable member of our community. We have lots of people in our community who are successful who did not attend college. So please let me hear from you about those two very important events, and I challenge, I'm sorry, the chief of police and I challenge other employees from the city of Danville, including the commission, to participate. Chief Gray's on board to participate in both of these activities. He's actually going to read to some middle school kids, so think about that. But he's got the right kind of armor for that job, though, right?
Taser.
Any other comments from the commission?
Actually, I do. There's a few announcements I would like to make. The September 22nd, the Kentucky Constitution will be on display, is that right, Jennifer? I have from 12 to 3.
Yes, it is right now. It may go until 1 o'clock. We're still working with the McDowell Family Day, a private show in the morning.
Ooh.
Okay, so the afternoon of September 22nd at Constitution Square?
Yes.
The Kentucky Constitution will be on display, and that leads into the Samuel McDowell Memorial, I guess that's a weekend thing. But there is a ceremony the morning of the 23rd at 9:30 in Bellevue. They are placing a new headstone for that grave that morning to honor Samuel McDowell.
Thank you, that's, that was, that's very important as well, yes. And by the way, you know there's going to be, there's an original signer of the Kentucky Constitution present on that day, so that would really be exciting. He's setting someplace to my left, in case you were wondering, but... Okay, move right along. Item number six, payment of the bills. Chair, entertain a motion?
I move to approve payment of the bills in the amount of $536,362.51 cents.
Second.
Any questions, comments, corrections? Hear none? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries. Item number seven, Resolution 2017-09-11-01 Municipal Advisory Services Agreement. Ms. Michelle, go, sir.
Yes, before you have your resolution, in order to do, sign the contract, for the most, sign the contract with Compass Municipal Advisors LLC, they, the only reason we're having this before you is because the name of the company changed from Civic to Compass when they merged with another company. These are the same people that's worked on it, with the exception of Chris Bowling, which retired, but RJ Palmer, which you all met, has worked with, and they were a vital part of our last bond issue, that we got an excellent rate, lots of bidders, and they do an excellent job for us. They are maintaining the same price structure as we had before with no changes.
I move for approval of Resolution 2017-09-11-01.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of passage, say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries. Item number eight, Resolution 2017-09-11-02, request for approval to apply for a local records grant. Ms. Donna Peak.
We would ask that you approve Resolution 2017-09-11-02. It's basically authorization to apply for a records grant through the Kentucky Department of Archives and to prepare or repair and preserve some of the oldest minutes, like back in 1900s. They'll put canvas covers on them to make sure they last forever, so it's up to $20,000.
The grant will be up to $20,000?
Mm-hmm, with no match.
No match? No, we like those kind.
Didn't we get this once and for all?
We did, we got it maybe seven or eight years ago, and there's not been any money out there. I asked him, he said that he would come in, he came in on Friday, and had to have the paperwork in this week, so hopefully we'll get it.
I'll move for approval of Resolution Number 2017-09-11-02.
Second.
Questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item number nine, First Read of Ordinance 1903, sewer industrial pretreatment limits.
Thank you, Commissioners, Mayor Pro Tim. You have in front of you the revised ordinance that changes the industrial discharge limits identified on page two of four. The limits are in our existing ordinance for all of those, I think, but for one, I think, chromium. Also, on page three, you'll see that the, there is a charge for the chemical oxygen demand on a COD that is not in our ordinance also. The ordinance amending the city of Danville's Kentucky Code of Ordinance says Section 18-56E pertaining to the sanitary sewer industrial discharge limits and Section 18-80, Part III pertaining to the monthly sewer service charges for industrial customers.
Thank you, sir.
I move for approval of First Reading of Ordinance 1903.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have a one quick question. Earl, you might want to, just for the public's benefit, mention who determines those levels for the ordinance?
Thank you, those are given to us by the Kentucky Division of Water, and we are implementing, we implement those. We have until September 30th to implement these changes.
Other comments or questions? Not call for a roll call vote?
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Searies?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Atkins?
Yes. Item number 10, Resolution 2017-09-11-03, fiscal year 2018 SWP grant memorandum of understanding. Mr. Coffey, again.
Thank you. The Resolution 2017-09-11-03 accepts the memorandum of understanding as presented. The memorandum gives direction related to the implementation of and requirements for the acceptance of the stormwater protection, source water protection grant given to us and valued at $46,932.22.
We previously approved the application for that grant as it pertains to the education or educational park in front of the water treatment plant.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2017-09-11-03.
Second.
Thank you.
This is putting icing on the cake.
Yeah, and it's for $46,932.22, but it requires a 100% match of 46,932.22.
Taking us back a little bit, the folks that were doing the work on the water plant maintained within budget and actually did not have a lot of overruns, correct? Is that how I, yeah, so, yeah, so we're in good shape to put this icing on the cake.
And not a part of this motion, but we had the letters to the editor from those two young elementary age students in our community, and I hope by now we've responded back to them, sent them some information. Thank you for the letters they sent to us and also a copy of the playground proposal. Call for the question on the motion on the floor?